Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, January 7, 2019. I would ask all present to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Actually, we'll have two meetings this evening. The first will be the organizational meeting of the City Council, and that will be followed immediately by the regular City Council meeting. So to begin the organizational meeting, I would ask the City Administrator to give the oath of office to the election winners, Councilor Leon Deech from the East Ward, Councilor Joseph Kraus from the Center Ward, and Councilor Walt Buller from the West Ward. And a few folks would come up to the front here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to administer the oath of office to each of you individually, so bear with me. Because each of you represent a different ward, we'll do it individually. So I'll give you a copy of that, Mr. Deech, and if you could read. I, Leon Deech.
I, Leon Deech.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
As to my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Charge the duties of East Ward Counselor.
Discharge the duties. Falls, the City of International Falls.
And continuance in office.
Continuance in office.
I'll give you a pen here just to sign.
I, Joseph Kraus Jr.
I, Joseph Kraus Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. My ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Charge the duties of Center Ward Counselor.
Discharge the duties of Center Ward Counselor.
Falls, and for the City of International Falls.
And finally, Mr. Buller.
I, Walt Buller.
I, Walt Buller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. As to my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Charge the duties of West Ward Counselor.
Discharge the duties of West Ward Counselor.
For the City of International Falls.
And for the City of International Falls.
Thank you, City Administrator. Mayor, on behalf of the City Administration, the City of International Falls, it is my honor to present a certificate of election to each of the new councilors. The first to Councilor Leon Deech for the East Ward Council. To the Councilor Joseph Kraus Jr., congratulations. West Ward Counselor Walt Buller, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for office, thank you for serving citizens. Would you like the whole council?
Sorry, Harley.
I think he swiped your pen there, Walt. And now to the business of the organization meeting. Item number three on the agenda is the selection of the Council President Pro Tem. As Mayor, I would recommend Councilor Harley Droba if the council wishes. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilor Kraus.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilor Buller. Name Harley Droba as the Council President Pro Tem, and in that position would take the place of the Mayor in the Mayor's absence. Discussion on the motion?
Question?
Question, I'm good.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I.
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 Yes, motion is carried, and the selection of the Council President Pro Tem is Councilor Droba, and that carries. Thank you. We'll then go to, we have two lists of committees, and having met with the individual councilors ahead, tried to place them on committees that they desired to serve, and I don't know how many copies of that is out in the audience. For the council, these are appointments of the internal committees that the councilors serve on. They include Legislation and Land Use, Councilor Kraus and Councilor Buller; Budget and Finance is all members of the City Council, with Councilor Droba serving as Chair; the Human Resources Committee is Councilor Deech as Chair and Councilor Kraus; Public Works and Infrastructure, Mayor Anderson would serve as Chair, and Councilor Buller and Councilor Droba would be members of that Public Works and Infrastructure Committee; Airport Commission representing the City Council would be myself and Councilor Buller; Community Education Advisory Counselor would be Councilor Deech; International Falls School District 361 Recreation Commission, myself, Councilor Droba, and Councilor Kraus would serve on that; Highway 53 Long Range Improvement Task Force, myself and Councilor Buller would serve on that; the Kooching Economic Development Authority, myself and Councilor Droba will continue to serve there; liaison with the International Falls City Chamber of Commerce, myself and Councilor Droba; the Rainy Rapid River Zoning Advisory Board, myself; and the Special Police Department Fund Committee, Councilor Buller and Councilor Deech will serve on that. We'll be having an ad hoc committee sometime in the future, working on that right now, and that's for the census, the 2020 census, we would have a complete count committee that would be appointed later, working on that one with the Census Bureau right now. So if the council has a pleasure, we could adopt all of these at once, or if there's questions with regard to any of them, certainly welcome to express those at this time. Councilor Droba.
I, I'm noticing on the Kooching Economic Development Authority, you have the two current members, which is myself and you. I believe we have to have alternates as well, do we not?
We certainly can, and we could have an alternate, or we could have one alternate.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me, I think we should have at least two alternates, so.
Okay. Would you like to serve? Councilor Deech? Councilor Buller, would you like to serve as alternates on the Kooching Economic Development Authority?
Sure.
Thank you. We'll put down Councilor Deech and Councilor Buller.
With that change, I would make a motion to accept all of the council committee appointments for 2019 through December 2020.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Droba has moved to approve the internal committees of the City Council. Approval.
Second.
I have a second from Councilor Kraus. And our normal practice in voting, and we have to vote on every issue individually, is to start with the East Ward and go around, and as Chair, get to vote last. But, and if you want to change that, and we can move it back and forth, but it's whatever the council's pleasure is with that. So further discussion with regard to the motion then to approve the council committees.
Aye.
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 I have a vote yes. Motion is carried, and the internal committees are approved. Thank you. The next sheet is the Boards and Commissions for the city, and I believe we should probably take each of those individually, however, where we have a multiple number of folks being reappointed, the council could take and move on all of those, that's up to the council. But, and these are individual citizens who are serving with no remuneration for their service, but they do serve on these boards and commissions, and in some cases, there are city councilors and others that serve on them also. The first is the Fire Civil Service Commission, and Mr. Terry Erman, who has served in that position for a number of years, desired not to be reappointed, had a request from former Councilor Mr. Brian Briggs to serve, and I am putting forth his appointment for the Fire Civil Service Commission for a three-year term. Council's pleasure with that.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Droba.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Deech to approve the appointment of Mr. Brian Briggs to the Fire Civil Service Commission. Discussion.
Question?
Aye.
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 I have a vote yes. Motion is carried, and Mr. Briggs is approved then for the Fire Civil Service Commission. Thank you. The Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and they operate the Woodland Park Apartments. Mr. Thomas Smythe has asked to be reappointed, and he has been serving in that position for a number of terms, and the length of the term is five years, so that term would go from January 1st of 2019 to December 31st of 2023. Your pleasure with that reappointment.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Droba.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Deech. Discussion. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 I have a vote yes. Motion is carried, and reappointment of Thomas Smythe is approved. Thank you. For the Library Board, we have two reappointments, Mr. Dick Peterson, who lives up the lake, and we are allowed to have one person serve on each commission from outside the community if so desired, and since we do have quite a few of the residents of the area that use the library, have chosen to reappoint Dick Peterson to that position. Also, Ms. Mary Jo Winkle, who is a citizen of International Falls, both of those terms are three years to serve on the Library Board. Your pleasure with either doing them individually or together.
I would make the motion to accept both appointments to the Library Board.
Motion by Councilor Droba to approve the two reappointments of Mr. Dick Peterson and Mary Jo Winkle to the Library Board.
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilor Kraus. Discussion. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 I have a vote yes. Motion is carried, reappointments are approved. Thank you. For the Planning Commission, we have three individuals who have been serving on the Planning Commission, Mr. Clint Chase, Mr. Willie Koszak, and Mr. Matt Gwynn. All three have requested to be reappointed to the Planning Commission, and your pleasure with individually doing that or together.
I move that you appoint all three.
Motion by Councilor Kraus to approve the reappointment of all three individuals. Seconded by Councilor Buller. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried, and Planning Commission members are reappointed. Thank you. Police Civil Service Commission, Mr. Tim Ebersson has been serving in that position for several terms, and has asked to be reappointed, and have agreed to do that. Your pleasure with the reappointment of Mr. Tim Ebersson, he's a high school principal also, to the Police Civil Service Commission. Motion by Councilor Deech to approve the reappointment of Mr. Tim Ebersson to the Police Civil Service Commission.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Droba. Discussion on the motion. Question?
Aye.
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 I have a vote yes. Motion is carried, and the reappointment is approved. Thank you. On the Zoning Board of Appeals, Ms. Julie Erman has also served in that position for several terms, and has agreed to serve another five-year term, citizen of International Falls. Your pleasure with the reappointment of Ms. Julie Erman to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Kraus.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Droba. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried, reappointment is approved. Thank you. The North Kooching Area Sanitary District, I've asked Councilor Leon Deech to serve a three-year term in that position. I've spoken with Mr. Steve Blair and told him I was not going to reappoint him to the Sanitary District, and he was, seemed okay with that, so I would ask your approval of the appointment of Councilor Leon Deech to the Sanitary District.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Kraus. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried, and the approval is given for Leon to serve on the Sanitary District. Also, would appoint Mr. Roger Jackson to a three-year term on the district, taking the place of Mr. Terry Murray. Did receive a request from Mr. Murray to serve. I have not had an opportunity to discuss with him that I intended not to reappoint him, but we've had some differences on the North Kooching Area Sanitary District, and chosen not to appoint Mr. Murray, so I'm asking Council to approve the appointment of Mr. Roger Jackson. Motion by Councilor Deech to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Droba. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Droba.
I, one of the first things that happened when I got on City Council, I sat over there, and we had a big, long, it seemed like six-week conversation about the North Kooch Sanitary District and the appointments. And I, like Mr. Terry Murray, I think he did a very good job, and there has been a differences of opinion on the sewer board, and in all honesty, I'd like to see Terry stay on there. However, it came out, and one of the things that your predecessor had said, Councilor Briggs, when it came up, is, we don't, we shouldn't be looking at the worthiness of who is not being appointed, but we need to look at the worthiness of who is being appointed. And I think that that stuck with me quite a long time, and I don't see anything wrong with Roger Jackson taking that position. I think Roger will do a fantastic job, and I know that there's going to be some controversy in our community about not appointing Terry Murray. With that being said, I fully support the recommendation of Roger Jackson, and I think Roger will do a fine job, just as Terry Murray did.
Further discussion. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried, and appointment is approved. Thank you. International Falls Kooching County Airport Commission, the citizen member, we have one application from Mr. Paul Nevenon to serve a two-year term on the Airport Commission. This also takes concurrence by the Kooching County Board of Commissioners. Under the Joint Powers Agreement, the agreement is that the City Council of International Falls makes the appointment, and the county board commissioners must concur with that. So reappointing Mr. Paul Nevenon to the International Falls Kooching County Airport Commission as a citizen member. Your pleasure.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Kraus. Seconded by Councilor Buller. Discussion. Mr. Nevenon has served several terms on the commission already, and in fact, the Kooching Economic Development Authority that he's executive director of, they will be moving their office to the terminal in April. Administrator.
Mayor, question, in light of the conversation, or question raised by Councilor Droba regarding the, I'm wondering if the council would, to the Airport Commission, I believe we've done it in the past, and I don't know if their term is under a year or not, so it's, whether or not you want to appoint alternates to this commission as well.
Certainly appoint alternates to that. Both myself and Councilor Buller will be serving as commissioners of the Airport Commission, but we certainly could have alternates should one of us be absent, so Council, I will come back to that issue. Let's do this reappointment and come back to the issue of alternates for the Airport Commission. Thank you. Further discussion with regard to the reappointment of Paul Nevenon to the Airport Commission? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried, and reappointment is approved. Thank you. So then to the issue of the Airport Commission and alternates, anyone that wishes to serve as an alternate to the Airport Commission?
I'd like, I'm busy there, Councilor Droba.
Well, and the only reason that I wouldn't be able to is because it's, they meet in the morning, and secondly, they, it seems like the airport might have a lot more going on than something, just someone popping in once in a while to, you know, try to fill in. If you don't know what's on the agenda, what's moving forward, what the projects are, what's going on, it just doesn't seem like I could really add any value by showing up once every four months, so.
I'm going to rescind my.
You don't want to serve? Okay.
No, sir. I'm going to pass.
I'm going to pass, okay. Well, we have no alternates then for the Airport Commission. We can ask someone to attend if we're not going to make it.
I fear that with my work schedule, it wouldn't.
Generally, we meet at 8:00 on the fourth Wednesday of the month. That completes the internal and external committees for the City Council approval. We'll go to item five, and we have a letter from the City Attorney, Steve Schremon, for requesting reappointment.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Droba to approve the reappointment of Steve Schremon as the City Attorney.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Deech. Discussion. This is a two-year term. And the City Attorney is out of town and will be for this meeting and the next meeting. Further discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried, reappointment is approved. Thank you. Health Officer, the city has not had a health officer for a number of years, primarily because the city charter requires that it be a doctor, and there's been some discussions at the Charter Commission with regard to the service of the health officer. I think there's probably one of three ways, or we could do all three ways. One, I think we could send a letter to the Rainy Lake Medical Center and to Essentia and ask if any of their doctors are interested in serving. Item two, I think, would be that we could speak with the county and see if they have secured a health officer for the county. Or three, I think we could go to the Charter Commission and possibly look at changes there, either doing away with the position of health officer, which I know Council Jacksaw has advocated in the past, or we could ask that a physician assistant or a nurse practitioner all learned in medicine that they would serve. And the primary purpose, and of course, the Charter Commission is something that's been around for many, many decades, is that when there has been issues at homes or businesses, the health officer has been called in to give their opinion, medical opinion, on several issues. And while that doesn't happen very often, it certainly is very helpful when those instances arise. So at this point, we don't have anyone to serve on the health officer position, but I do have a couple of recommendations, and covered those with the City Administrator also, and so those are possibilities that the council could pursue, asking doctors at the Rainy Lake Medical Center or Essentia if they would be willing to serve, speak with the county and see who they are going to secure as a health officer, or go to the Charter Commission and broaden the individuals that might serve in that position. Thoughts from the City Council?
Question? How long have we gone without a health official?
I believe it's probably been four years.
Okay, and has there been complications that we need one? I mean, why would we put one on unless we need one if we've survived four years already?
And I would turn to the police chief and the fire chief, who both serve on the Board of Health. Have you had instances where you believe we should have had a health officer work with you? Could I ask either of you to comment?
Last one I can think of would have been a flood on Rainy Lake there when they were there is situations in which a health officer involved. My standpoint on the ambulance side, by charter, we have a medical director. A health officer, and those titles sometimes get diluted, so there is some opportunity. A health officer, my medical questions would go to the medical director of the ambulance at that time, so. Had someone we've used that in the last year.
Thank you.
Question? What would this be a cost to the city? What would this be a cost to the city?
Generally, the salary has been $300 a month, $3,600 per year.
Basically a retainer?
It doesn't cover their insurance that's required by them. I did have a former doctor who is still in the community who was interested in serving, but the cost of his medical insurance would have been three or four times what the salary was. And he wasn't interested.
And they're responsible for their own health insurance, is that correct? Or liability insurance?
That's where we have it right now, yes. And the city administrator, I don't believe that our present coverage from the League of Minnesota Cities Trust covers that medical insurance.
Not to my knowledge, that would be more like a.
My point of view.
Please, go ahead.
If we have survived without it for the last four years and there's no major need, if it can be handled otherwise, it's a waste of money for our city. Even though it's $300 a month, which is a drop in the bucket, but you had $300 here, $300 there. It's my opinion.
Thank you. Chief of police, did you have any thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, I haven't myself had any cause to need to contact a health officer. Any instances that we've come across, the fire chief and I have been able to work through one way or another, so I haven't had any need for one.
Thank you. I think the primary reason for having it here and before us is because the city charter does require us to have one. Counsel Dova, please.
It would be my thought and recommendation to go to the charter commission and have the health officer removed. And I did sit through a meeting with the charter commission where it was brought up by Counsel Jacksaw. There was discussion, they were going to look into what other areas do and what the, I don't think it was some procedures, but the need and the reasoning behind having it. And I think we should lean towards getting rid of the health officer in the charter. And then secondly, again, I think we sometimes get forgotten that International Falls is in the county. So we can utilize the county health officer if necessary in a pinch, or if we have something that some of our other officials need a health officer for, we can utilize the counties in some capacity because we are a city in Kooching County.
Question, thank you. So the, Chief Minasa, please.
Just for information, the charter was passed with looking into what the county does. At the time we did this, early June, when I spoke with Kooching County, they did not have a health officer either and they were in the same predicament. I think it's a good idea, Counsel Dova, I just want to make you inform that current.
At this point, we'll keep it open and go to the charter commission and see what the charter commission's thoughts are with regard to continuing the position. Thank you. Move to the next appointment, and that would be the board of health. And that would include the fire chief and police chief and with the vacancy of the health officer. Your pleasure with the board of health, please.
Mayor, that's a hard one. How do we make the board of health with those three people if we're saying we're going to reduce one of those people?
Well, I think as we heard from Chief Maston, that, you know, they would somehow find some help if they needed it with regard to medical question.
I would move with the board of health, since we do still have it in our ordinances that we have a health officer.
Motion by Counsel Dova then to approve the board of health with the fire chief, police chief, and health officer, even while being vacant. Second by Counsel Kraus. And I think there are times that we do see blighted conditions, homes with maybe too many animals, trying to remember some of the issues that we've faced over the past few years. So there are times that may be helpful to have someone to give some medical opinion. That, further discussion on the board of health?
Okay, on this motion, it's including putting a board of health person in?
It would, I think we said we were going to go to the charter commission and talk to them first, but the board of health would include a health officer should the position be filled.
May I ask what exactly the board of health does? I mean, I know you kind of mentioned like blighted. I mean, is there a large need? Do you guys meet often? Is there regular meetings or is it just kind of an as-needed?
As needed.
As needed.
And I think as Chief Minasa pointed out, when we had the flood and we had issues at the beach, that's one of those, but there are also blight conditions that have been brought forth.
May I? Please. So gentlemen, would it, do you feel it would behoove you to have an additional person to have an opinion, whether they be that health officer or some other position? Or you think you pretty much have it covered?
In certain situations with weak, your signature would be.
Please, city administrator.
I believe the rationale for having a health officer in the charter is that if there's instances of public health threats, pestilence, I don't have the exact terminology in front of me, but those types of issues, the health officer could provide advice and consult to the city council as well as staff in those situations. And as I pointed out, we've already had instances with flooding, elevated levels of fecal coliform at city beach, both here and as well as over in Canada. So having that public health input and doctor input would be important. Going to Chief Minasa's comments, when we deal with blight issues and if we get into an enforcement scenario in front of a judge, having an M.D. behind your name and the credentials that a doctor brings from a public health and safety standpoint, safety being more the purview of the police chief and the fire chief, and then the health issues from a health officer is the reason why the city has one, has a health. Right now, I think with the health officer being vacant, as you pointed out, this issue will be visited in more detail with the charter commission. But right now, the question would be is just continuing with the committee of the health officer actually being appointed and being vacant.
We're tasking the fire chief and the police chief to handle health issues in the community at the present time.
That's correct.
Further questions or discussion? Counsel Kraus, please.
I wonder, would there be a way to amend it that maybe after the charter commission meets to, if they come up with another solution perhaps, whether it maybe not be a person, that somebody may volunteer if the charter commission's able to change in, or maybe through the hospital or through Essentia, just have somebody that we could consult to step up in these rare instances where we have these situations, as Chief Minasa said, he didn't, he wasn't able to cite anything in particular. But we do have, there are things that can come up. So.
I would agree with Counsel Kraus on that, but at the same time, Chief Minasa and I have had to handle a few situations, or a number of situations over the years together. As I've worked with Chief Jensen in the past, and I've never had contact with a health officer. We have resources available to us and we can certainly reach out and get the answers that we're looking for, more times than not. So I don't know that it would necessarily be, I don't know that it would be necessary to appoint some, another person to the board if it's not going to be an actual doctor. I've gotten through for quite some time, I don't imagine we won't continue to get through it, so.
With the charter commission to give us their thinking on that. All right, further discussion. If not, call the question on the appointment of the board of health.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried, board of health is approved. Thank you. City engineer, and we have a letter from Mr. Curtis Meyer, who is with the firm Woodsey Smith &amp; Knowlting, who has been acting as the city engineer and also doing surveying for the city on projects that the city has. Pleasure with Woodsey Smith &amp; Knowlting serving as the city engineer and city surveyor.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Buller.
Second.
Second by Counsel Deitch. Discussion.
That was for both positions? Yes. Okay. He's the gentleman that did the presentation on the tax question, or on the sales tax question, sorry. I would say he's, he doesn't, so.
Further discussion. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried and appointment is approved. Thank you. Item number six, under the organization meeting agenda, is approval of the payroll dates. And that's biweekly on Tuesdays, and that started on January the 2nd. Twenty-six pay periods in the year.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Dova to approve those pay periods.
Second.
Second by Counsel Kraus. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried and payroll dates are approved. Resolution on the designation of depositors. And you have the resolution that includes the Bremmer, Bremmer Investment Management and Trust, Wells Fargo, and Border State Bank. Edward Jones and Minnesota Municipal Money Market Fund are the designated depositories.
I would move on the resolution.
Motion by Counsel Dova to adopt the resolution on the designation of depositors for the city. Second by Counsel Deitch. And as the resolution points out, those that have money trusted to them or entrusted to them, they must also put up collateral for the city and they provide us, excuse me, with a list of collateral for the safekeeping of the city funds. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, motion is carried and resolution is adopted approving the designation of depositors. Excuse me. And item number eight, the last of the organization, and that's the designation of the official newspaper for required publications, and that would be the International Falls Journal.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Kraus.
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Dova. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion is carried, official newspaper is approved. Thank you. With that, we adjourn the organization meeting of the International Falls City Council. Thank you.